All this meeting to order. So Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
George, would you?
Oh, gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for all things that you've given to us today. And we just put praise and thank you for all things. We ask Father that especially for our servicemen and women that are serving overseas and at home, special blessings, but also upon our first responders, Father. We ask other blessings that go out throughout the neighborhood. We've had some losses that affect quite a few of our citizens, and we just pray for them and their loss. Yes, now, Father, be with us through the rest of this meeting, for it's in His name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you stand with me, I pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, so our first order of business will be nominations for Chairperson. So, do I have any nominations for Chairperson?
I nominate Jan for Chairperson.
Thank you.
Any more nominations?
I was gonna nominate that we just keep our board the same. Dave, I think things are going well. Dave is Chair, Jan is Vice Chair, and George is our Treasurer. I just really think we've had a good, I really felt like the end of our year where things were really working well together. And that's truly how I feel, is I think we have a really good thing going, and I think with the new legislation for four-year terms, it changes things on, we can either decide to do one or two-year, if I'm correct. So, as a board, I think we should, that's just my opinion, so.
So you're nominating Commissioner Owens.
Yep.
For Chair.
What he's saying is just leave the board the same, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yep, I'd like to just keep us all, because I think right now, it just seems like as the year went on, we really, I think, gelled and worked well as a group together. Like, I felt like we were, conversation was good, our meetings ran smooth and efficiently and effectively, and I'm like, I would like to continue that at least another year. That's like.
I would agree with that.
So I guess I haven't checked Robert's rules to find out if we can just do a nominee, or a motion to keep the board the same compared to the individual nominations for the Chairs.
I did look at the, I did comb through the new law.
Okay.
And I believe it does require us to elect a Chair, and then the Chair takes over the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two nominations on the floor. Any more nominations for Chair? Any more nominations for Chair?
Who nominations to be closed?
So with a pod roll call. So say yes or no for Jan Bunting to be Chair. Hold on, I gotta get this written down. Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting.
Well, I would say yes for myself.
Commissioner Gay. Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Sapsi.
No, I don't, I just really think we need to, you do a great job at running that meeting when you're, when you're filling in, and that, that's why I'm going that way, is I really think, for once, I felt like this thing was really kinda went along the way it should be.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's good.
That's my opinion.
A roll call for Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay. Commissioner Owens. And Commissioner Sapsi.
Was that a smooth transition of power?
Yes.
Angie to.
Well, I also think that there's an issue there, too. I mean, we, we did get along really well.
Okay.
Things went really great, but there has been times that you have not been fair to one of the Commissioners on this Board, and I think that's very serious. So I think I will tell you this, from this point on, if we're not fair, when I mean fair, you know what I'm talking about, I'm going to see an attorney and bring him in on this, and I'll pay for it myself. Because I think that we are getting along well, but we need to be fair about everything that we do, speaking meetings, Boards that we're gonna sit on, things like that. So, anyway, that's all you have to say. But I think we're all good Commissioners. I think that finally, that we have all worked together there at the end, and you are right.
That's what, I, I just think that this really felt like the last few months, it was like, I really felt like, I left here, I felt like we had a good communication, good dialogue, and good results.
Each one of us come.
When we got there, let's keep that.
One of, one of the things I wanna say is that each one of us is from a different, I can't say, I can't say age, because we're all about the same age, but we all have done something different in our life. Some of us are teachers, some of us are policemen, some of us are management, and I'm a little of everything, and you've been a farmer. And so, each of us come from a different field, which I think is very important, but I think that we have to be very considerate of everybody, not all, there's some things I don't understand, and I don't even say anything here, I usually go home and look it up or ask somebody else outside the meeting, it's a little embarrassing that maybe I don't know something I should know, sometimes we feel that way. And so I think we'd be, we need to be very considerate of other people, just because we've been, a lot of, a lot of us have been on this Board for a long time. And yet we have, we have a new person over here, Steve, and there's very things that he won't know, and.
And I gave this a lot of thought, I'm, I'm, yes, I spent a lot of time, you know, I took conversations with, with Tim, I had conversations with you, I had conversations with George, and I talked to Dave on the phone as I drove to Mason yesterday about this very issue of, I, I really think, you know, with this opening up this four-year term thing that we just got into, it's different than it was just a year ago for you guys with the two-year terms, because, you know, it's like every two years you had run, now we have a different perspective. So if things are just clicking along, then you start over again, you know what I mean? It's like, I, I wanna carry this into, you know, this next year with feeling like we can, we got a lot of, our contract negotiation stuff is, a lot of that's behind us with most of our employees, what can we really get accomplished this next, this next, this next year? That's why I wanted to do this.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, too, because one of the things that I have thought about, that I think is very important, and I think we have a paper here that Angie made up of all of the different committees, not only committees, but things that we take care of here in the county, such as the airport is one of them, Conservation District is another one, Steve and I went to all the meetings just recently, and there's a few more that even I'm on, but I've never been able to vote for. I would like to see us four, for us five Commissioners, in the next four years, and this is up to you guys, I know I'm going to do this, I'm gonna go to every single one of these meetings at least once in the next four years, and maybe even two or three times on some of them. Parks and Rec is another one, I used to sit, I've sat on a lot of the Boards, because I've been here a long time, and you, too, George, you've probably sat on a lot of the Boards, you and I have traded, in fact. But I think in order, in order for all of us to understand this county is run, we all need to go to at least each one of those, I was trying to think where that paper is, will come across the air.
This one. You talking about this, that is the list of all of them?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's a list of everything. And if you can take that list, and just write on the, and then when you come, you can say, jeez, I thought I'd go to the airport meeting, just to see what was going on. And I think if we can do that, that kinda opens the door to what's really going on in our county, educates, we need to be educated, and we're gonna be on this Board for four more years, and there's a lot of, lot of them I have not been to, ever.
This is something you and I talked about on the phone.
Right.
And I agree, I think that, I don't know whether we have to get it all done in a year, because that's, that's asking a pretty good ask, but over the course of the next couple of years.
No, I'm thinking four years, in the next four years.
We should try to hit all, I, I agree, because I think there's things that, you know, Tim, for instance, is on a Commission, but I've never been to that meeting, I have no idea. George, same thing, I've never been to those meetings, I've been to mine, and then I went to this Conservation District thing, but, you know, I, I really think that it, it is eye-opening. For me, going to the, the Health Department one was very eye-opening of what that organization actually does. Conservation District, I was pretty familiar with it because of, you know, personal life, but Parks and Recreation and how involved that is, it's very eye-opening, it's way different than what you envisioned, oh, you're gonna talk to Park and Rec, you know, you, you know, you think Parks and Rec, and there's a TV show that was a comedy, you know what I mean, and I knew it wasn't gonna be like that, but it's, it's just, I think it would be, when you talk about Michigan Works, that's one that I, is like top of my list, I wanna, I wanna see what that's about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's an odd. That is one I think everybody should go to it. Tim, you and I've been to it, you've been with me with it, and then.
Kicked off.
Pardon?
I got kicked off.
Well, you didn't really get kicked off, wouldn't, see, a lot of these Boards that are out there, you can only have one, like, they only allow one person from Gratchit County to vote.
I understand.
And, but you still wanna go, because the thing is, you find out.
Then, in our conversation, I thought Steve was going along with it, too, that we're gonna rotate the Chair every year, and I thought, well, okay, that's a good idea, so that's why I nominated you. But now, Steve never got back with me, so I thought that was a good idea to rotate every year, have a different one.
And, and we still can do that as a year.
Now, he's still the Chair.
But this is the first year of our term, and if we do one year.
Oh, I see that, the first year.
Yeah.
So, so next year.
We still have to decide, we, we have to decide as a Board, are we doing one-year, two-year assignments, because that's part of this new law, I just reviewed all that stuff, so I would be versed on it, because it used to be that you could do different things, but our choice, we have to decide as a Board, one-year or two-year terms for, I believe we can do it, correct me if I'm wrong, I know, Chris, you, you and I.
In the rules of organization.
Yeah, so you can do it for, yes, so we can do it for Board, Chair, year or two-year, correct? You can also do it for Vice, or does that have to be every year?
They, they should correlate, they should all be the same.
Okay. If that's what your goal is, Tim, we need to take that into consideration as we go forward. If your, your, your concern is just.
So, year, we rotated for four years, everybody could be Chair.
If you wanna be.
Yeah, if you wanted to be. Definitely wanted to.
Some of us may not wanna be.
Right, okay, well.
I think it's, I think it's good that everybody does get an opportunity, especially, I, I mean, I think like with Tim, he's only on one Board, you should have the opportunity to either be the Vice Chair, or Chair of Finance, or the Chair of the Board, or the same with Steve, George and I both have been, and so it's not as important to us as it would be to you guys, but I would like to see if we, even if we.
It seems like it's pretty important to you.
Well, yeah, it is important, it is important, but everything we do here is important, but, but back to this other, is being, going to all of these committees, some of them you're gonna wanna go maybe two or three times, and some of them you might only wanna go once in the four years. I think that when we come in here, when we're talking about stuff, we can kinda relate to what somebody is talking about. It's easy for me, when I first started, I gotta tell you, I didn't know anything about any of these meetings. It's taken a long time for me to feel comfortable, but not only that, I've gone to meetings and they go, you're the first County Commissioner that's ever come to our meeting, and that's sort of sad. One of us is child advocacy, and another one is the prison, they've asked me to come to their meetings, but anyway, I just think that we're on this Board, separate, or to, that's what I'm looking for, to represent, to represent the county, and it'd be nice if we can kind of, and another place we can do, too, is visit each one of the departments here in the courthouse, and the general, we've been invited there now, and I think it's important that we do these things. But anyway, that's, that's basically all I'll say.
Okay.
Ask me any questions at any time, you guys, about, and if you are unsure where you should start on some of these places, or some of these Boards, get with me, and I can tell you a little bit about each one of them. Or George Kent, he's been here for a long time, too.
They're all, they're all open meetings, you don't need an invite, just go when you want to. Okay. Questions for nominations for Vice Chairman?
Jan's our current Vice.
Yeah, I thought we were just gonna say that.
Well, I think what she found is we have to do individual.
Oh.
And for Vice Chair, if we're keeping everything safe.
Uh-huh.
For Bunting, Commissioner Bunting, sorry, I used her first.
We have to do a roll call on that, or?
Yeah.
Yep.
I just.
Is there any more nominations?
Who nominations to be closed?
These ones are closed.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Okay, the appointment of the Finance Chairman, with the consent of the majority, I'd like to keep George. Okay, pardon me. Need a nomination for Finance Chairman.
I'll nominate George.
Any other nominations?
With the nomination to be closed.
You know, if you can do that, be in the, if he can't, you can use me, I was gonna say it.
I think you have to say it three times. Is there any more? Is there any more? Is there any more? There, I start.
Well, that's like, you were last year.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
We did have one addition to the agenda, we wanna put A-CAP Board.
Delegates.
Delegates.
To the Chairman to do that.
Prove their rules of organization.
Do you want that under like H1, then, is that?
That's, that's.
M1? Wasn't that, or is that?
Policies and procedures.
Well, that A-CAP, isn't that for?
So the A-CAP Board is represented by delegates for Commissioner Bunting and Commissioner Gay, which is Jen Cook and Michelle Rainbow. And so I think we need a motion in order, because I received a letter and they just wanted verification that they, we were gonna keep the same Commissioners with their delegates.
Oh, okay.
Same person's still on there, right?
They will be if one's.
Yeah, yeah, but she, she actually works for the schools, so it's a real good fit that she's on that Board.
Yeah.
But it has to do with kids, that's.
Out objection, I would say that that would be fine.
That we keep A-CAP the same, with the same two Commissioners and their delegate, correct?
Can I add it to, yep, to M5?
Add it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you okay to approve the amended agenda?
One more.
One more?
We need a closed session for union negotiations.
That's six, M6, then?
That will actually be.
Do you wanna make it?
The airport, so that's gonna be.
Hold on.
That will be F, that will be Q.
Q?
I think.
Q, yeah, there's a journal, so, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other additions or deletions to the agenda? I hear motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
By Steve, supported by George, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Vote nay, motion carried. Any public comment? Administrators report. Consideration of the consent calendar, excuse me. George, supported by Steve, to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Now Administrators report.
Well, with the holiday season, the last couple of weeks, courthouse was pretty quiet. There's a lot of people that were off. Happy time for most people, me included, I spent the entire time preparing for audit that started this week. So we're two days into the audit, and it's been the best first two days of audit that I think our county has had since I've been here, so I've been really happy with the progress that we made. I think that our audit firm is actually gonna make a profit this year, getting in and out of here quickly. So I do appreciate them sticking with us without this. So that is what I have been up to in the last couple of weeks.
Just a question, how long would the audit normally take?
How long would, should it, or would it?
If you have no.
Some years.
Should it? Takes a whole year.
Um, I believe if they are furnished with everything upfront with minimal corrections, I think they could audit Gratchit County within three weeks. That's not all at the same time, that's a week here, a week here, a week here.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna guess about 90 days total.
So, but historically, I, I would venture to guess that they've probably put about five to six weeks of work into doing audits. A lot of that time-saving that they're gonna be seeing this year is due to the Treasurer's Office having everything completed before they even start here, so.
Which is in correlation with our approval, we'll, we'll group to come in and help them streamline and get things, you know, accounts and ledgers and stuff in order, if I.
And also train the staff.
And training the staff to effectively use the new system.
Yep, I, yeah, it's been, it's been amazing.
Well, I mean, Jan, you start with us going into those departments, it's just, you walk in up there to the Treasurer's Office, it just feels like things are, it's like, just feels like a fluid, like things are happening as they should, it's not a, you know, just, most departments you walk into, really around here, it feels that way, from the maintenance to, you know, it just feels good when you walk in there, like things are happening, and, I mean, it's, it's nice, that's the way.
Yeah, yeah. I recommended that, I thought, years ago, I used to always, every year, go to each one of the departments, and they were so tickled to see a Commissioner come in.
Yep.
And I just think that it's just nice, that shows that we care about them, and we care about how they're working, and, and I usually say, is there anything you guys need, or is there anything, a problem, everything, you know, just for conversation.
Mm-hmm.
And, but it just shows that we care about everybody.
Absolutely.
And it is hard to go to everybody here.
The new county potlucks, you know, those, those really help the county potlucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you see a lot of the faces and the people that here, who work in these different areas, you know.
Do you have anything to report?
Commissioners report? After our last meeting, I went to a whole bunch of stuff, back in December here, so we had our, our second meeting of the month was on the 17th, 18th, George and I went to Mid-Michigan Health Department, wasn't a whole bunch going on there, getting ready for the holidays and stuff, the big thing was they are re, the Gratchit Office is being updated with all-new Cat 6, if I remember right, that whole building, they were having trouble with their internet service and, and getting it, so that things were working effectively and efficiently in there, so they had a bid come in, and they are in the process, I stopped there, because I seen some activity in the parking lot, the door opened, and they are actually working on, they were working on it that day, rewiring that entire building, they were taking a lot of the old out, there was stuff that, when that building was built, it wasn't marked right, so they didn't even, there was outlets with Cat 5 stuff to it that didn't even work, because it never got connected on the other end, so they're really updating that, and I think it will make them more efficient and effective in what they're trying to do, and.
Also upgrading the server farm, too.
Yeah, their server farm, the stack is gonna be all updated, so I think things will be a lot faster, in fact, as well, so that was kind of the big thing they talked about a lot there.
The Health Officer talked about Listeria.
Yep, Listeria, and at that point in time, they didn't know what was gonna happen with the sewer thing.
Sure, what we know.
Actually ended up going down, so, but at the time, they didn't know for sure what was gonna happen with that. From there, I had Parks and Rec that same night, Parks and Rec had their last meeting at the Alma Public Library, those meetings will now be held at the 911 Center in the EOC Room, partly, it's centrally located for everybody to get to, secondly, people want to zoom in, that building is all set up for it, the room we were meeting in in the library did not offer that to us, so now, you know, if you have anybody that, a guest or anybody that wants to zoom in, they'll be able to zoom into those meetings, because they're open to the public meeting. I went to, oh, I was, I went to Perrington, but not for a meeting, I was a Christmas light judge along with the new sheriff, and the Deputy Fire Chief for the Ithaca Area Fire Authority.
Gallagher.
Gallagher, yeah, so we were the, they drove us around town, and we got to see all of the Christmas lights in Perrington, and it was, it was a neat thing, and we got a little gift bag thing for doing it, and it was, it was a lot of fun, and driving around, you know, you, let's face it, I drive through Perrington a lot, but I don't go down every street, and they drove us down every single street, so that we got a chance to see everyone's Christmas lights, and there was some really beautiful displays in Perrington, it was really cool, I actually, I was like, this was, it was a lot of fun.
What was in your gift bag?
There was, what was it, Reese's, Kisses, Hot Chocolate, what was that, Little Debbie Christmas cake, Christmas tree cake thing, and a scratch-off lot of tickets that I went nothing with. I had as much luck with that as I did the one with the employee dinner, I think, I got nothing out of it, so, but I, that was, that was what I did this, or the end of December, and it was, had a lot of fun, it was, it was good, so. And it gets really busy next week, without.
Jan?
Okay, well, the end of the year, I went to the Alma Airport Dinner, which was last Saturday, and that was well-attended, there was around six people that were on the addition. We had milk that was brought in by the Shepherd Bar, absolutely excellent, it was prime rib, green beans, salad, you guys would have loved it, plus they had chicken on top of some other macaroni and tomatoes, and then they had dessert afterwards, and who were the singers again?
Sweet Allin, Sweet Adelaide.
It was Sweet Allin, yes, they were excellent, that was fun to listen to, they told jokes, so it was really a fun evening, I hope they invite us again. And then also, at the end of the year, I always make cookies, I don't make them, I pay somebody to make them, and I delivered cookies, I, each year it gets bigger and bigger, the group does, so this year I took cookies to Alma, to the Commissioners in the Fire Department, and the Office, and St. Louis the same, the St. Louis Library, the Post Office in St. Louis, Bethany Township, and I also brought cookies for the county here, and I was front to the deputies, and I also brought them to Michigan Tiger, there on Michigan Avenue and 46, so I was busy picking up cookies and delivering them, pretty much, just about every day.
Brought them to us at one of the meeting, our last meeting.
Yeah, I brought them to you guys, yeah. Yeah, I brought to you guys, yeah, brought to you guys too. I've been doing that for probably the last. Thirteen years. So, but it's fun to do.
Give myself a note to give you a reminder what kinds I like.
Well, I didn't have any, any meetings, just the airport dinner and that was great. Tim?
No, I didn't.
At the end of the month, there's not much. George?
Uh. I had one meeting and that was in Breckenridge. Well, that was Breckenridge. The camp, I had to cancel it because there was snow and ice that night and I wasn't going to drive to Breckenridge. Other than the health department, I had no other meetings.
Well, you know, last, last week.
Was that on Monday? Yeah, Fulton meeting was the same thing and the, actually, they got ahold of me and they're like, there's nothing, don't. Risk driving now fifty seven was slick. They're like, there's nothing on the agenda.
I got ahold of Jeff Full of Strander and I'm sorry, but I'm not going to make the meetings. I don't blame you.
That's just what.
That's snow and ice night?
You know, we did have a birthday last week. I want you guys to know that Tim had a birthday. He's now fifty.
Fifty? Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Slightly older.
I thought you looked not a day older than twenty nine, Tim, but I just.
My trophy wife gives me, builds up my self-esteem.
Yeah.
I never thought, I never thought I was good looking until then. My kids would never.
That's awesome. Giving her the kudo.
She has to say this either. She's not fast to tell you that.
Hey. Yeah, happy birthday, Tim. Okay, then move on to new business. Consideration to adopt. Grashit County Board of Commissioners Policies and Procedures. Have you had a chance to look at them? Like the town. Organization, the council, they're organizing one, a bunch of pages there.
On the rules of organization, I did highlight the areas that I updated. You got a colored copy.
Uh, they're gray wherever the. The changes are.
So included in there is the thing that. That you'll probably want to discuss is whether or not you want to hold. Chairperson election annual basis or every two years because that is part of this. You would have to make that change. Currently I have it at two years. So if you want to change that, now would be the time to do that. Also as a part, an appendix of this. Is the. Appointments. To the committees. So if you wanted to talk about the appointments to the committees, then as a part of this also. And how it is, how it is separate.
What page is the appointment thing on? I'm trying. I know I've read it and I'm just, I think I'm passing right.
What page?
Twenty seven.
Oh, the point thing, that's the appendix thing.
We're looking at.
Yeah.
That's a switch.
Yeah. The.
In the rules of organization, it's page thirteen. So that's the bottom right. Number.
This doesn't, this doesn't have the board chair thing on it. We need to do that. Then we got to do these assignment things. I, I just went through, I know Tim is, this is a consideration for Tim. I just went through and did a scale of. George is on four committees, Bunting's on four committees, Tim is on two committees with an alternate of two committees. Owens is on three, Sopsey's on two with an alternate of one. That's the number of the count. If you go down through all of them and you. Bailey for Bunting for Gay, two is the primary, two is an alternate, Owens three, Sopsey two, an alternate of one. So.
But one thing I would point out that the two that George and I are on brownfield redevelopment. And economic development. Each once a year in December.
Yeah, yeah. I knew that there was some explanation that was needed on some of these things.
And the one for ACAP, that is, that's the teacher from one of the schools. I've never even been to that meeting ever. And the reason why is that it's usually during the day.
And you've been to school, yeah.
And, but also. When we decided to look for someone, well, it's kind of like Commissioner Aging too. I think we have a commissioner on that, but there are a lot of people that are on Commissioner Aging that are elderly. And also from different parts of the county.
Well, I know that, you know, Jen, you and I went to the conservation district meeting.
That's not even on.
No, because it's not one that we're currently, no one's assigned to that. That's why it's not.
See, it used to be, we used to have commissioners on a lot more than what's here. It used to be two pages. And so we've kind of dropped a lot of them and you can see how important conservation district is. And where did I just read something? I think it's in my group there. Paper. But there's a lot of stuff that goes on with that.
Mm-hmm. Which one?
Conservation of.
The conservation district, yeah.
Trying to think what other ones are on here.
Well, I also, Dave and I go to that.
One up north?
No, no, that's Tim and I go to Northern Michigan Counties. Tim's the, I'm the alternate on that one. Tim's the assigned, I'm the alternate.
Is Michigan County.
Oh, shit. Northern Michigan Counties Association.
Okay.
Um, the one that Dave and I go to is the Pine, Upper Pine River, Upper Pine River Watershed, which is actually. Ladine is the one who orchestrates that through the conservation district.
Upper Pine River?
Upper Pine River Watershed. In fact, they have a meeting coming up here.
For soil conservation.
Well, I think that's tomorrow. Yeah, there's one tomorrow with them.
Well, there's also one for in St. Louis, for the Pine River. What's that called? Pine?
Healthy Pine River?
Yeah.
Healthy Pine River, yeah.
It's on, it meets on the second Thursday.
And that's when they have that big meeting at the library.
Library, yeah. I give them money, so I probably should. That's why I said, there's a lot of meetings here. That they never see any commissioners and yet it is big because that river goes through every one of our counties just about. And that's why there, there are plenty of meetings here that we can attend.
Down my way, that's all the maple through down there.
The what?
The maple is the one that goes through down my area.
Oh, the maple. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And the bad that goes through. Well, I guess the bad kind of. The water shed I think goes in. Because it goes through yours, George. It goes through some of yours, Tim, doesn't it? The Bad River?
Bad River, yeah, that's out, that's out.
On the east side, it then dumps into the pine, then it dumps into the pine, right?
Our star Hamilton Lafayette Township.
And what is the. There's another group too. I just had him on, I just, now I can't remember. I'll think of it again in a minute. But there are a lot of groups. Oh, I know the one, there's a group and it's in Motcom County, but they come over here and they're the ones that raise money to build. The walkway. It goes all the way through Grashit and Alma Com County. You can, the trail.
The rails, the trail thing?
Yep.
Yeah.
There's also that committee.
You must be talking about the Fred Meyer one.
Yes, Fred Meyer.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to.
Parks and Rec, take care of the expressway.
Okay.
That's, that's part of.
Who does?
Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
The one that's along one twenty seven from Washington up to Eldred.
Okay. That Fred Myers, they used to come in my pizzeria. Once a year and have pizza because they would rock, I forgot how many miles over a weekend. But anyway, there's lots of things that I have not ever been able to do, but I'm hoping to at least visit once this year. This year or next year.
So just, I guess we, when we're talking about, we don't have to go through these individually, do we Angie? Or Dave? You can just leave them as they are unless something.
See, that's what I think. We would start going to some of these meetings. Who might say, hey, you know what? I don't really go to this meeting. And I really don't like that meeting. And who can I shove it off on? No, I just, I'm just kidding.
I'd like to do that at work too.
You want?
Not do the things I don't want to do.
I know, I'm just kidding about these. Because you seem to be in the joking mood tonight.
All right, so. Section four dot two is the organizational meeting, which is. It's page seven of the organization. In the introduction or paragraph for organizational meetings. It says. You. Election of a chairperson if it's an odd year. So because of the way that it is worded. Every odd year, right now, these rules are for us to set up to reelect. Vote for a chairperson, vice chairperson. So if you. Go to the law that is. Reference there, M C L forty six dot three parentheses four. It says that. Chairperson shall be elected odd numbered year for a two-year term. Unless the county board of commissioners provides by resolution that the chairperson shall be elected annually for a one-year term. The vice chairperson shall be elected annually for a one-year term.
If you did it annually, there's nothing that says, you know, because Tim's suggestion, he'd like everybody to do it. But if like George had mentioned, what if somebody doesn't want to do it?
I have no interest in being.
That's what I'm saying. So if somebody said they didn't want to do it, you could be reelected to do it multiple years in a row because it was done yearly. I mean, we could all next year say. You know, anybody else want to do it? Dave, you know what I mean? We could do that again on a yearly basis. The way the law is set up, it, it's going to have to happen every two years. Unless we do a board resolution to change it, correct?
And then I'll have to, we'll have to make an edit to this. Be in the minutes before you would vote for it.
And that would be vote next or vote now?
See, you could do it every year and even next year and then we can amend it.
With a resolution.
Nobody wanted to do it. It's so bold enough.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, you know.
But it would be nice. I would like to see you be a chair and even Tim be a chair because it's a good experience for you guys. You've, especially Tim and Dave, they've been on this board now four years and the end of four years.
I've been on four year, two years.
Two years, you were.
Two years.
Were you here before that?
They were both.
No, he's only been here a couple of years.
Years.
He was voted Lenoakston.
They've been here two years. I've been here thirteen months. So.
Oh, I thought you guys had been on this board longer than that.
Been here. And I've been ten.
Well, how time goes go slow.
I think, Tim, right now is if you feel strongly enough that you want us to, every year, then we need to make this amendment.
I thought that's what the plan was.
Well, it was the planning. But. You know, my thing right now is to decide this.
I, I just.
Wait. What's going on?
When Tim called me to talk about this, there was just, he, him and I conversing about, and I, I'd mentioned someday I would like to be the chairman. Someday I'd like to be the vice chairman. You know what I mean? I want to know these positions. Same thing I told you. At some point in time, I want to do these different positions as a county commissioner because I think it is important. I think it broadens your horizon. It gives you. A different perspective of doing things. However, after doing a lot of self-reflection and talking to. You, talking to, talk to George and talk to Dave, I really true think it, you know, when you look back on. What we have done and accomplished as a board, I think things are running really well and, you know. No offense to you, Dave, but you have become, as you've went through a full year now of being the board chair, I feel. You, working with Angie and getting the, the agenda down, we run a smooth meeting. It runs. We have an effective, smooth running meeting and that's why I. Let's not rock that boat, you know what I mean? Because if you start over with a new person, no matter how hard you study the, all the rules, Robert's rules. Literally, you know what I mean? Where he runs a good, smooth meeting right now. And so that's where I was going, Tim, when I, when I made that decision in my mind. The, if things are running good, let's keep it going and see where we can take this. But if, if you feel strongly, the next year we want to, right now is the time we got to make this decision. Or otherwise, if we don't change it, Dave will be our board chair for two years. Jan will be our vice chair for two years. George will be our treasurer for two years. The way it's worded right now, the way I've read it. Change it. This is when we have to change it.
But then, and then if I went to chair, you would come to vice chair. You kind of want to be chair too, don't you?
At some point in time, I do.
Yeah.
What Angie is doing right now is double checking with the law. Should I, we don't have that, have a resolution right now today.
Okay. So. She's looking up the M C L right now?
She's reading it right now. If that is the case, it would be a very easy resolution that we could put together.
Right, absolutely. And we can see resolution number one for twenty twenty five.
It's got to be done by resolution.
I think this.
What the law is.
I think that's what you're going to have to do, yeah. I would, I would think that that would be cool setting.
Because it says that.
That's what we want to do. But if you go every two years, the law says every two years. Don't have to make.
I have to say something right now.
To me.
I'm going to change it to one year. We do have to have the resolution today.
So that. Under your direction.
Two years, in the last two years, we could have a resolution in twenty twenty seven to make it one year.
Two years now, that's.
Yeah, what, what, however, I mean, I, I want to get a chance to do it at some point in time, but. I mean, I'm, I'm. Fifty-three and hopefully be on the board for a while. You know, that's the goal is to spend some time.
You're a baby on this board.
You're the baby.
I was surprised when Tim said he's younger than me. I didn't realize I was the youngest one till Tim.
I, I actually didn't say that.
You're correct.
Tom? Yeah, my side.
That makes him younger than him because him and I are the same age. George, he just, we don't know. It's a mystery.
Hey, do you, do you want a resolution to change this?
No, I gave it my best shot. That's it. Just live with it.
I think it's a wise idea. We go by the law and if we've got to twenty twenty seven, if something makes changes, we'll, we'll change it.
I'm totally good with, if that's what the board feels, then that's fine. I would, I really. I, I think we are working well together. Let's keep this baby rolling.
Rock the boat. Hopefully we'll all be here in twenty seven.
Yes. Well, you never know. You get an older day. Unlike a couple of other youngsters around here.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the procedures as adopted, as revised.
Also move. Support.
George, supported by Steve to adopt the. Commissioners Policies and Procedures. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To approve.
Vacation schedule.
The meeting schedule.
Meeting schedule.
So, so Chris did have a meeting schedule, which was nice that he moved August and November up to Monday. But I think we can keep it on Tuesday because hopefully no elections in.
This year. Something off year, so.
So even if we do have an election, it's going to be a small one, like the city of Ithaca will maybe running in November. I'm fine with being here on Tuesday night. So we can leave it on Tuesday to make it easier for everybody. So that's why we have.
I have to change my calendar at home. I think I've pre, what I went through and put preempted that, oh.
The commissioner just automatically comes to your head. You don't need to look at a count.
But for those two months though, when, you know, when there's elections, I write it because otherwise I would miss it for sure.
Well, once you're a commissioner long enough, you'll figure it.
Okay.
Wanting to prove the schedule.
As presented by George. Or by Steve to approve the meeting schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holiday schedule.
Aren't we approving this? That never could figure that out. Sheriff's Department's schedule, obviously, is the sheriff's department's schedule. I mean, why are, why?
They're different, you know, because when we negotiated with the courthouse, uh, Good Friday became a full-day holiday versus a half-day, which is still the sheriff's department is a half-day.
Oh, that's gotta be negotiated, doesn't it? Boy, we'll knuckle down on that one. Say that right easy. Okay, I see now.
That's why you're seeing two.
Okay, I would move that we accept the sheriff's department's holidays as presented. Or.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the sheriff's department holidays. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's name, motion carried. Need to approve the holiday schedule.
Uh, I've looked it over and I don't see any holidays this year that were similar to last year. We've either got the Fourth of July on the Friday, we've got Memorial Day on the same day it always is on a Monday, Labor Day on the same day as on Monday, so I say, I'll make a motion that we approve the holiday schedule as presented.
Do we have to do a separate one for central dispatch? Because I see that's.
Uh, they're not a, they're not part of this county, right?
They adapt. They adapt what we would adopt.
Yeah, it's listed separate. That's, I just want to make sure we don't miss that.
They, they kind of run their own system.
Yep. You make a motion? So move or support this motion for holiday for the rest of the county.
By George, supported by Steve to approve the holiday schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's name.
So um, in December, at the last meeting, I did miss the mid-state health network appointment and we received an application from uh, Emily Rayburn.
I know her very well. In fact, I know her husband very well. Uh, she's an excellent person. She'd be perfect for this job because they deal with a lot of the same problems that mental health does. And so I, I am, I would greatly nominate her to be in that position.
I'll support because I was gonna start talking when you started because she'd be great for that. I mean, I, I worked with her.
Excellent.
Um, when I was at the, the sheriff's office and I just, I think she would be, but I have no choice for this.
We're throwing through Rotary.
Mm-hmm. She's just. Mm-hmm. Amazing young girl.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to appoint Emily Rayburn to the A-CAP board. All those in favor, say aye.
To the mid-state.
No, no, mid-Michigan.
Mid-Michigan.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Motion carried.
And then the one that we added for the delegates for A-CAP, so that I can send a letter to A-CAP and those delegates, if we can maybe just reappoint Michelle Ringel uh, representing Commissioner Bunting and Jen Cook representing Commissioner Gay.
A moment. Moved by George, supported by Steve to keep the same two people for A-CAP board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. You go into the commission meeting or airport meeting.
And make a motion that we suspend the regular meeting to go into the airport authority meeting.
Before, with George, supported by Steve to on the recess of this meeting to go into the airport meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's name, motion carried.
So we are, we have submitted five or four grant applications to the state of Michigan for some general fund projects. Uh, we expect to hear back from them in two to three weeks. Uh, weather's been bad. Not a lot has been happening out there. I told Dennis that he could take tonight off, he'd need to come in. Uh, he submitted a written report for this board to accept and we did not have any decisions beyond that. If anybody would like to pull out or highlight anything from Dennis's written report, now would be the time to do it. If not, back in, so.
Don't see anything that's really changed from the last meeting.
No, but it's, it's good to see that we're selling more gas out there.
Yeah, some gases that have bright lighting, that's a good thing.
So he did provide me with some reports and I believe over the year we had a forty-two, was it forty-two thousand dollar surplus in, in fuel systems. So it is, it is doing exactly what we were hoping to do. Couple that with the uh, interest that is being made on a monthly basis, five thousand dollars of the seed money from the county. Um, I dare say that for now uh, that is looking to be pretty close to not to continue funding our, our airport operations. So that's very good news.
It's amazing. What, what months did the fuel system go online?
January, end of January last year.
Was the end of January. So pretty much we have a full year, but I mean.
Yeah.
It's jet A. I mean, fifty-five hundred and three point eight gallons up from previous.
Yeah.
And now I know that, you know, there were some problems with the system previous to, but then.
It wasn't, I don't think, fair to say, I was not really under full swing until about March.
Yeah, so a hundred low lead was up six thousand seventy-two point nine. I mean, you're, you're talking you know, that's eleven, you know, that's, that's a lot of eleven thousand five hundred and some gallons.
And it wasn't.
That's a.
It's summer that we became a destination people to get gas.
It's gonna take time.
Yes.
People are gonna learn, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Something was on there and they're the they're the most inexpensive gas around.
And when you look at the year interview, it's neat to see all the things that happened out there. I mean, you guys were just out there for that, that gathering to see it, but I mean, a lot of us were there in the summer also for their, when they had to fly in and it, it, I think you know, I'm proud that the county has stepped up and done what we've done. I really think that it's a huge asset to us um, for a number of different reasons to have that airport, for it to be a viable airport. Um, hopefully in the future, we can, you know, secure some of these other grants that we've been trying and uh,
You do have an interest to the airport. Now, I don't know if everybody knows that we now have a jet stationed at the airport, which we never had one in the last ten years.
Mm-hmm. Horex.
Horex, Horex. Out of Lansing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we really should take a minute to, to show appreciation for the advisory committee members because they have gone.
Great job. Without them, we would struggle. They, they give us great advice. So far, we've been able to follow that advice and I can think that that'll continue in the future. Uh, every one of these people are dedicated to making sure that the airport grows and runs, but under controlled circumstances. It's not all.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, it's a, it's really a, a true feather in the county's cap to have that airport and to have it run effectively and efficiently and I, I truly believe you get people coming in and whether they're just coming here to buy fuel or, or whatever, but we get those, those the paving redone that we're talking about doing and then the painting that he's talked about, you know.
Sprinkle that up some. Now that we didn't get the grant.
Yeah.
Spruce it up on the inside a bit.
Yep.
Uh, I'm really, it's a new grant, but in the meantime.
Yeah, you gotta have some.
People want to actually. People come in, they got something nice to.
I just really think that uh, you'd be surprised if people, you know, we now have a jet there where, you know what I mean? It's just, those are the things that happen, good things happen. Who knows who they talk about or tell, hey, this is a great place to utilize. And I, I think it will be.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of that is word of mouth, a lot of that is having a good experience.
Yes.
Coming there and that's.
Community is a, you know, that, that's a.
That's why I want to pick up that terminal. There's a lot of people that just come for the day or whatever. Their pilots have to stay around. They want to make it more convenient for them. We do have a courtesy car that does help.
Okay.
That came from the county sheriff.
Well, Dennis just tanks up to uh, uh, very low cost and that fuel will be able to sell all the way through June.
Yep.
And that, just him to have the freedom to be able to purchase large quantities at a low price, it's, it's gonna get out there.
Absolutely, that, absolutely. Makes a huge difference.
Dennis is really good at finding that stuff. He really is.
Wonderful.
So we've, 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 we've been very fortunate to have the people on staff and everyone, and where we're working that, that always pull together and do a good job. I'm pretty happy.
Willingness and the, the good attitudes of our buildings and ground personnel too, to be able to if we ask them to spend a couple of days out there just helping Dennis with some of the projects that he has around fixing doors that haven't been working in five years, things like that. It's been, it's been really good.
It's awesome. Yeah, I, I mean, I, you looking for something you know, like more pointed from us about.
Just accept the report, so it's in the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't know when you, our appreciation for that advisory committee, just to talk about it.
Okay, it's in the minutes. It's on YouTube.
Yep. I saw move that we approve the report, the printed report from the, uh, the airport.
Okay.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to approve the report from the airport. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's name.
A motion that we suspend the airport meeting and return to the regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
By George, supported by Tim to recess the airport meeting and go back into our regular meeting. Any public comments? Need motion to go into closed session.
A motion to go into closed session.
Jim, move Jan's second to go into the closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Matt, we will not have any uh, decisions after this, so if you want to close it down and head home, that would be okay.